We'd like to call the meeting to order tonight. Welcome everyone to come in. Unfortunately, we're still on Zoom format, so we can't see all your lovely faces. But thanks for everybody for joining. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, will you call the roll, please?
Rockman?
Yes.
Kenning?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Merkel?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Lieberman?
Here.
And Stevens?
Here.
Okay, so tonight, we have a public hearing, and we're going to turn that over right now to Mr. Koontz, who's going to provide our staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council members. The Plan Commission case before you tonight is one which has generated quite a bit of conversation via various platforms across certain sections of the Northmont community over the past two months. Healthy discussion and public participation are all aspects of what make our community a wonderful place to call home, even when there are honest disagreements on specifics of an issue. Zoning cases such as the one before you tonight are important as they have the potential to springboard future development and investment in the community. Cases like these also have the tendency to create confusion and angst due to the complexities of zoning laws, anxiety due to change within the community landscape, and tension between fellow community members when there is an honest difference of opinions. This is something that occurs in almost all communities across the country when the prospect of growth and development are brought to the forefront of the landscape. These are the exact reasons why having a strong plan in place is essential for any community which considers itself a successful municipality, a community which desires to attract new residents while providing housing options so current residents may age in place, a city which desires to attract commercial investment and new retail and dining options for the entire community at large. As Director of Development for Clayton, I wanted to take a few moments to clarify some of the different aspects of this request and where we're at within the scope of the overall Redwood USA application. The application before Clayton City Council tonight was made by Redwood USA with the consent of the property owner, Mark Landis, as indicated in his signed affidavit included with said application. Also indicated in the application is the request for only a zoning district change. It's not an application requesting approval of any type of development plan. The applicant is under no legal obligation to even submit a development plan for consideration of this request. The specifics of the future development is not up for debate tonight. If you remember, at the end of 2019, beginning of 2020, City Council considered a similar request made by the property owners of 51 acres of land, which was not only zoned single-family residential, but was also being used as farmland, similar to the property at the corner of National and Haber, but this property was located on Salem Avenue. That specific request had no end user, nor were they required to. That specific application requested the property in question be rezoned to industrial, a use which Clayton's land use plan found in the Plan Clayton document had identified for the property in question. Many residents located in the residential property and plot directly to the south of the property in question attended the meetings to voice their concerns and opposition for the rezoning application. Ultimately, Planning Commission and City Council approved the rezoning request because the application followed what was laid out in the Plan Clayton document, and the land in question was identified on the future land use plan for that specific requested zoning classification. The property owner in this particular case before you tonight has also requested to zone his property be consistent with what has been determined in Clayton's land use plan to be the best future use for the property in question. As the applicant, Redwood only provided a preliminary conceptual plan to Clayton to show a good faith effort and to be 100% transparent on what they would like to develop at the site. However, the preliminary conceptual plan is not up for consideration tonight because, again, it's only a preliminary conceptual plan. The applicant wasn't required to submit one. There is a legal process that must be followed in rezoning cases, laid out by the Clayton Zoning Code and supported by State of Ohio Case Law in terms of rezoning applications. Things to take into consideration is primarily the approved future land use plan of the local jurisdiction as well as surrounding land uses. The details of the actual development plan will be determined, debated, and decided at future meetings with staff, the Planning Commission, and City Council. If the rezoning is approved for this specific application tonight, Redwood staff will then begin their site work, including figuring out where utilities are located at. And for the record, water is located along Haber, and sanitary sewer is located along National. A traffic study will be required, and a host of other factors will then be discussed between Redwood and city staff. The city has professional staff and engineers who will review the proposed plans to ensure the project proposal meets code and all appropriate life safety aspects are considered. These aspects of the project will then come before the Planning Commission and City Council to consider in open, public meetings, as is the legally required process. The rezoning case tonight is not the appropriate forum to discuss those issues. Tonight's case concentrates on the zoning classification of the land only. The intersection of Haber and National Road is an area that has been designated for future growth for over 20 years. Although there is an extremely large area of rural preservation located to the north of this site, the property in question has never been located in a rural preservation zone as long as Clayton has been a city. The original 1999 land use plan designated this intersection as a mixed-use area, including residential and commercial uses. That 99 plan actually called for single-family homes on both sides of Haber north of Fox until Sweet Potato. The Plan Clayton document has actually increased the rural preservation area from its 1999 counterpart along Haber. However, again, this property, or any other property located south of Fox and along National going west until Barnes, has never been located in a rural preservation district within Clayton. Plan Clayton identified the specific intersection as the Clayton Commercial Center. This intersection is considered both a future commercial and residential neighborhood on the future land use plan because it's been designated as a flex-use area with a mixture of uses: residential, commercial, and open green space. The designation for the Clayton Commercial Center was not something that flew under the radar or went unnoticed throughout the Plan Clayton process either. During the two public draft workshops where our consultant Urban Collaborative presented the working drafts of Plan Clayton to the general public and City Council, there were several specific points discussed. The first aspect included the zoning designations of property located along Southway and Salem Avenue. The plan proposed identifying those parcels for industrial uses. After community and City Council feedback, it was agreed the future plan would continue to show uses as they were presently shown on the current zoning map, and the plan would not call for an expansion of future industrial uses along those specific areas of Salem and Southway, which were discussed during the public workshops. There was also a proposal made in the draft to potentially develop townhouses facing some of the city's parks to assist in crime prevention in the parks. After community and council feedback, it was also decided to remove this element from the plan. Central cores along North Main Street were discussed specifically as it relates to the redevelopment efforts along this corridor, and new possibilities are now offered in the approved Plan Clayton document. Finally, the northwest corner of Haber and National was discussed, specifically because at that time, the draft called for this area to be designated as only a mixed-use classification on the future land use plan, consistent with what was found on the 1999 land use plan. Specifically, there would be a mixture of commercial and residential uses in same buildings at this intersection. After council discussion, it was decided that this intersection continued to be an important anchor for the future development of the city due to its proximity to the Village of North Clayton and the hope that a central city core would begin to be developed between the New High School and Village of North Clayton down to along Hope Road towards Wanger Road, similar to what was originally intended in the 1999 land use plan. However, it was not known if a true mixed-use with commercial and residential in the same buildings was a realistic use at that location. It was later proposed in future drafts, in order to give the city greater flexibility at the site, the National and Haber intersections would be identified as the Clayton Commercial Center and be designated for flex use to allow for the market to dictate what would occur at the site, with the goal of having a mixture of commercial, residential, and green space uses across the site. The property in question sits directly on National Road, otherwise known as US Route 40. There is approximately two miles between Haber and North Main Street. Between these two points, there are five large-scale residential developments with direct access onto National, some of them with over 200 residential units. There are at least a dozen commercial strip centers of varying sizes along the same distance. The Inglewood Government Center, including the Fire and Police Headquarters, are located along this corridor. So is the CLEPS Early Learning Center, CLEPS YMCA, Sinclair's Inglewood Campus, Kettering Health, and the Village of North Clayton. Northmont's high school and middle school are located to the west of this intersection. The new Northmont Library is going to be located directly on National Road, approximately a mile from this intersection due to its traffic volume and its direct proximity to residential, commercial, and educational end uses. In terms of land use, this corridor has and continues to be one in which residential and commercial development has occurred, and the natural growth pattern has continued to move west from North Main Street along National towards this intersection. One final point about the intended and designated future use of land along National and north of Haber. On May 19, 2005, Clayton City Council approved and adopted the creation of the Clayton Improvement District. And the first line of that ordinance reads, "An ordinance to regulate the use and development of land in the designated portion of the city of Clayton to be known as Clayton Improvement District Number One." This district was created in recognition that the areas designated in the 1999 land use plan for future development would need additional infrastructure improvements, and this district set forth a mechanism to assist in cost recovery for such infrastructure improvements via impact fees. Under Section 2 of this ordinance, specifically the intent and purpose, it specifically states, "This ordinance is intended to assist in the orderly growth and development of the city." This ordinance further lays out what area the city is included within the Clayton Improvement District. And included with that legal description is all of US 40, National Road, and then lists the northern border of the approved district as the portion of Sweet Potato Road that lies between Barnes Road and State Route 48. In short, this specific piece of property that is before you tonight for rezoning is literally located right in the middle of the Clayton Improvement District, a district which was created due to the forethought of city leaders realizing the areas of the city which had been identified for future development would also need assistance in infrastructure expansion costs through impact fees. This ordinance and accompanying fees have been revised numerous times with updated legislation since 2005, the last time being in 2016. This district was created because the 1999 land use plan designated areas specifically for future development outside of the rural preservation area, and the intersection of National and Haber is located in this development district. The specific article in the zoning code, Chapter 1171, which addresses the zoning and additional development standards for the Clayton Improvement District is exactly that. It's a set of development standards for new development, all which will be considered during the preliminary and final development plan phase of this project, not during the rezoning application. There are no applicable standards set forth in this chapter that should be considered during this part of the process, except what is stated in 1171.03 subsection A of the general provisions, which states that a planned development classification is required for any development of land or assemblance of land with an area of five acres or more, which is why there is a request for a planned development rezoning before you tonight. Everything else found in this article of the zoning code deals directly with the development standards of such a project after it gets the appropriate planned development zoning classification. Again, the rezoning application before you tonight is for that only. The rezoning of land located at the intersection of Haber and National. The Planning Commission and City Council will hear project specifics and see final proposed plans in the future in open, public meetings as it progresses, where themes such as traffic patterns, density, stormwater plans, pond calculations, lighting, buffers, fencing, public space requirements, architectural design, and site layout will all be discussed and voted on. Those aspects of this project will be appropriately vetted and discussed as the project moves forward. However, this land has been designated not only for development, but also a mixture of use typologies for over 20 years. The proposed growth pattern is also consistent with what has occurred along National Road for the past several generations. Before I transition the presentation to Mr. Dorman, I do feel it's important to comment on some of the comments staff has observed specifically about the applicant and this potential project. There have been several false statements thrown out on various platforms, including an online petition, which included language on the original version stating this project is a low-income project financed by the Department of HUD. This project, if it moves forward, will be done with... This project, if it moves forward, will be one which actually is market-rate, financed via traditional lending mechanisms. It has been stated in social media posts promoting this petition that utilities don't run to the site, but they do. It has also been stated the state has denied traffic signal at the intersection of National and Haber, when in actuality, only multiple grant applications weren't awarded enough points for state funding, partially due to data that did not support the argument by the city that traffic was an issue at the intersection, an intersection which Clayton controls and has final say if a traffic signal is installed. The state has never denied a request from the city to place a traffic signal at that intersection. It has been reported on a local news station that there has been 21 complaints filed against Redwood with the Better Business Bureau over the past three years, and that Redwood's customer rating on the BBB website is 1.29 stars out of 5. Those numbers are true. But, as with everything, appropriate context is vitally important to understand the real There have been 21 complaints filed against Redwood out of over 12,000 residents Redwood has in their communities over the past three years, meaning approximately 99.8% of their residents have not filed a complaint with the BBB. The 1.29 stars is actually the average of the ratings given only by those same 21 complaints. Also on the BBB website, Redwood has an A-plus company ranking, the Better Business Bureau's highest ranking given, meaning out of the 100 data points the BBB uses to rank the registered businesses, Redwood scored between a 97 and 100%. Finally, within the last few weeks, 25 Redwood neighborhoods have also been recognized for their best-in-class online reputations as part of the Elite 1% ORA Power Rankings for 2020 by J. Turner Research. Considered one of the leading market research firms exclusively serving the multifamily industry, the national list only includes approximately 1,300 properties across the nation that have earned this distinction, and the annual ranking is based on monthly online reputation research of over 122,000 apartments across multiple review sites and internet listings. Redwood communities in Fairborn, Tipp City, and Sugar Creek Township were included with this 25. Redwood has a history of being a great community partner, and staff believes this rezoning application will give staff and the city a great opportunity to work with them as they move forward, with submitting a final development plan for the Planning Commission and City Council to vote on.
Chief, can you move to the next slide, please?
This is the signature page of the Plan Clayton document. It's found at the beginning of the document. There are three statements in the letter at the beginning of this document, which all City Council members signed after they unanimously approved the new land use plan in 2018. The first quote is, "The comprehensive land use plan will be part of our staff's daily efforts to build upon the foundation of the 1999 land use plan." The second one is, "The update will continue to provide a model of development that the city can follow for decades to come." And finally, "The City Council fully supports this plan, and we encourage the entire community to embrace it as well." These sentiments are important as they accurately describe what the Plan Clayton document provides. It's a roadmap. It's a model for the future growth of our city. It doesn't get into specific types of projects, but it details where general types of uses will be permitted to assist growing the community and the economic base of our community, because cities must grow. Otherwise, the tax burden of city services becomes too cumbersome to realistically survive. Plan Clayton is the document which tells us how to grow responsibly in a smart fashion. It's also a document the application before you tonight meets perfectly, and is why the staff recommends approval for it, because if we truly want to grow the city for the benefit of all 13,000 residents and over 200 businesses, we must follow the document approved by City Council in 2018, a document which states the piece of property before you tonight benefits the city as an entirety, being used as a mixture of residential business and open green space. Thank you. I'm going to transition to Seth. He will get into the details of the specific application tonight.
Thank you, Jack. I'd like to get into the specifics of the application for us tonight. The application is proposed zoning district change at the northwest corner of National Road and Haber Road from R1 to PD3. There you can see the parcels involved, portions or all of those three parcels. The overall area of the property is 33.73 acres, and if the rezoning is approved, the applicant is planning a mixed-use development with multifamily residential and future commercial I've put up a survey of the subject property. The area in tan is the 33.73 acres that are involved in the rezoning. The area in the green is not part of the rezoning. Put up the surrounding area, just to give you an idea of context of the location. Attempted to highlight the subject property in yellow. To the south, you can see the Northmont High School and Middle School campus. To the east, the Timber Ridge subdivision in Inglewood. To the west are single-family homes on Fox Road. And moving on. So I wanted to just briefly explain the current zoning, which I've kind of highlighted on the right-hand side. That's a clip of our current zoning map, so that property is under R1, which permits today, single-family dwellings, adult family homes, and care facilities. Conditionally permitted uses would include a bed and breakfast, public parks, recreation, non-commercial recreation, cemeteries, educational institutions, and halfway houses. The proposed zoning, PD3, would permit generally retail and service establishments, office establishments, residential and recreational uses, and farmer's market. But any development in the PD3 is subject to Planning Commission and City Council review and approval of a preliminary and final development plan. So looking at our code in terms of guidance for this request, there's Chapter 1126, which is the district changes and code amendments. It kind of outlines the requirements for public notice and public hearing, the procedure for the proposed zoning change, and the requirements of the application. Chapter 1169 is planned development, so we're proposing a PD3, or the applicant is proposing a PD3 on this property, which Chapter 1169 gets into the types of planned development, the procedure for approval, and the suggested development standards and area requirements. Chapter 1171 is the Clayton Improvement District, number-one overlay district, as mentioned by Jack in his introduction. That outlines the applicability, general provisions, and provisions for Special Area 1 within the Clayton Improvement District. So I wanted to focus tonight a little bit on the Clayton Improvement District and provide a little bit of a summary or a history, I guess, of how it came to be and how it relates to the proposed zoning changes before us this evening. So as Jack mentioned, the council established Clayton Improvement District Number One in May 2005 with the purpose of establishing impact fees for future development and then around the area known as Town Center, later to be known as Village of North Clayton. So the CID1 area includes about 1,800 acres north of I-70, east of Barnes Road. Over the years, there have been several ordinances to reduce the impact fees. There was one in 2012, which reduced the fees to encourage land development, and this is language that comes from the ordinances, as I stated. In 2015, there was a reduction of the fees to account for a separate collection of the Montgomery County sewer tap fee. And then most recently, in 2016, the fees were reduced, and you can see the rates for single-family, 17,000 square feet of commercial is a unit, and then 17,000 square feet of multifamily is a unit in the fees for that. The purpose of the latest reduction, according to the ordinance, is to encourage the prompt commencement of development within time periods conducive to construction. After council approved the CID1, it became apparent that a zoning overlay district would be required to establish certain guidelines for development in the area. In 2006, City Council established a subcommittee to study the issue and to submit a recommendation to the Planning Commission for their review and then ultimate recommendation to City Council. City hired McBride Dale Clarion out of Cincinnati to assist with the planning effort for the new overlay district. The consultant prepared a land use plan for the CID1 that helped to facilitate the discussion with Planning Commission and the public. In the land use plan you can see up there, maybe you can see up there, was created for the subcommittee's work on the overlay district, and it actually shows a combination of commercial and residential at the northwest corner of National and Haber. So it's consistent with what's proposed this evening. As Jack mentioned, there is kind of one area that's germane to the zoning district change. Basically, planned development required. Any development of land or assemblage of land with an area of five acres or more, or where more than five lots will be created, shall be developed as part of a planned development under Chapter 1169 of the zoning code. The request for a rezoning to PD for this 33-acre parcel is appropriate, and it does comply with CID1. Plan Clayton also provides guidance for us. It identifies the northwest corner of National Haber Road as the Clayton Commercial Center. This area is contemplated for any combination of flex uses, mixed uses, and parks. The regulating plan within Plan Clayton defines flex uses as a combination of commercial office and housing, again, both in one area or in the same building. The regulating plan defines mixed uses as more than one use within buildings in the area. Typically, it is commercial on the lower level with housing or office on the upper level. The regulating plan defines parks as areas of green space that cannot be developed. The regulating plan defines parks as areas of green space that cannot be developed for other uses. The proposed zoning is for PD3, which again permits retail and service establishments, office establishments, and residential and recreational uses. This PD is appropriate for the type of development contemplated by Plan Clayton at this corner. So the recommendation from Planning Commission, which was passed to you and that you're considering tonight on January 25th, their meeting, Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the zoning district change for the northwest corner of National and Haber Road from R1 to PD3 with the following condition, and it's subject to the rezoning being approved and the preliminary and final development being approved for proposed development, but that the lots involved in the development will be combined into one primary parcel for the residential area and that the applicant establish lot lines for the future commercial properties. This does not need to occur immediately, but should occur prior to submitting for the zoning certificate and building permits for the initial phase of residential construction, and then prior to permit submittals for the first commercial outlot. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is there any questions or comments from council? Okay, it looks like none.
I guess I do have--
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Henning has one.
The only thing I would have to say is, so everything that, you know, everything we just learned, we don't really-- I'm getting a lot of echo on this, a lot of feedback. There we go. Thank you, maybe. Everything we just learned tonight is a continuation of facts, if you will, that you, in the Development Department, has stated during the Planning Commission meetings. And my one comment, I guess I have to say, is when Plan Clayton was signed, we technically had a different administration at that time. We keep referencing that it's going to be something that it's a roadmap that we're going to use for decades to come, but in all actuality, with new administrations could come a new desire for what that roadmap should look like. And I really just wanted to say that, you know, we talked about, we heard tonight that this will provide for new dining for the entire community at large. But I will say, as we've seen from the correspondence we've got from residents, is this something that they want for the entire community at large? Is this an entity that they want in their backyards or across the street from them for the betterment, if you will, for the entire community at large? That's something I think we need to think about as we represent only the residents of Clayton, not the entire community at large. I assume we'll be able to have comments also after Mr. Thurman's done presenting. So I'm done for now. Thank you.
Okay, anything else for Seth?
I have a question. It wasn't but, I don't know, two or three meetings ago, in the room, when Jack was giving an update on Plan Clayton, and he said there will be no PDs in the new Plan Clayton. We're going away with all PDs. And a week later, first rezoning project we get is a PD3. Now, if we don't have any PDs in the new Plan Clayton, which the committee's working on, how are we going to have a PD3? That's strictly terminology, I understand, but we'll get into the rest of it later.
Thank you, Mr. Gorman. Under the current code, the PD3 is our, is a zoning option that gives us commercial, residential, and office. We are, in the current draft of the zoning code update, we are adding the ability for a planned district back in, for the additional flexibility for the city as well as for developers.
Well, in our discussion, I was in favor of PUDs from my experience in zoning, and Jack was very much opposed to them. And now we get an opportunity, and we go right back to where we were, which, I mean, I don't have a problem with PUDs, don't misunderstand me. But Jack did it that night. I mean, we, I'll call it a discussion. It may have gone a little further than that, I hope not, but I don't know why the first thing we see two weeks later is a PD.
Mr. Gorman, can I comment on that?
Certainly.
And I apologize for any confusion that there may have been-- I'm sorry. I apologize for any confusion that there may have been. At that workshop, what I stated was that the draft that was before City Council at that night did not have planned development in it, but then I furthered my comment and said, after staff had done some practice exercises, we had determined that planned developments needed to be incorporated with the new zoning code. And moving forward with the final draft, we were going to include planned development once again in the zoning code. I was explaining where the draft was at that particular evening at that workshop, but I did follow that up with a spreadsheet that also showed that moving forward, we were going to incorporate planned developments back in the new zoning code. However, with that being, and I apologize for any confusion, but with that being said, that version of the zoning code update has not been approved by City Council, and we're still operating under the current zoning code, which also has planned developments. We cannot implement the new zoning code or any regulations that are found in that updated code until it's been gone through the Planning Commission, City Council approval process, which we're still a couple of months out of.
When we approve the new zoning code-- when we approve the new zoning code, and there'll be no PDs in it, but now we're going to approve one?
We have not approved the new zoning code, sir. I'm sorry if there's confusion with that. That night, it was just an update on where the draft of the new zoning code was at.
And I think we have a committee looking at all of this as we speak. Well, I mean, they're not meeting right this minute, but we do have a committee for that, don't we, Mayor?
Thank you, Seth. Next up, we're going to ask if there's a representative from Redwood, if you have any comments or questions for either Seth or Jack on this, or is any general comment?
No, sir. I have a short presentation just to introduce Redwood to the community at large, and have a few talking points to go over, and let the rest of the hearing proceed.
Okay.
Really, now?
Yeah, so do we have access to this presentation? Okay, I think we have access, so go ahead.
Seth, do you want to bring the first slide up, please? If you go to slideshow, yeah, that'll be good. Next slide, please. So, yeah, you're going too fast. Thank you. Go ahead, next slide. I think if you hit page down, it'll just go one at a time. So I'd like to introduce myself, Gregory Thurman. I'm with Redwood USA. I've been in the industry 40 years. We've built thousands and thousands of our Redwood apartment units over the last 30 years. We're very good at it. We do a lot of business in the Dayton market area, and we've become neighbors for a very long time. We don't sell any of our properties. We never have in the 30 years we've been in business. And as somebody stated previously, we have a little over 13,000 units stabilized in seven different states, and we're headquartered out of Cleveland, Ohio. I'm down here in the Cincinnati market, down on I-75. Next slide, please.
Hey, there.
We do one thing. We build single-story apartments. It's the only thing we build. The apartments have a two-car attached garage to each unit, and the neighborhoods we build include anywhere from 300 to 400 new trees and plants that are irrigated throughout the development. So we're proud of the retail look that we bring to the table. We do a great job in this region. We've been, we've won awards for our communities, and some of that information's already been out and discussed, so I won't repeat it. But apartment neighborhoods is the only thing we build, and we're good at what we do, and we understand the struggle with change, but we persevere usually and become parts of the neighborhood and become very good neighbors. The one bullet point there that states that we're great stewards of our land ownership refers to the fact that we bring a lot of opportunities to the table that can fix some of the issues that are on the table from the community, such as traffic and stormwater. Sometimes there are sewer issues. We help build new sewers. So the opposition that brings up some of these items, it's important for us to make sure that we consider that as we move forward through the process and the engineering of a preliminary and final development plan. And that's the whole point of that statement, is that we can help fix some of the things that are in our neighborhood should we move forward into the final development plan stage. Next slide. These are the communities in southwestern Ohio that I've been responsible for in the last seven years, and many of them are built. You can drive through them and see how they interact with the surrounding communities. Many of our communities were the first one in, and then around us, there's custom home builders, there's move-up track builders. We are an incubator for business, and most of the areas that we participate in, and this corner is designated to be just that, even though it sounds like some folks aren't in favor of the comprehensive plan and what it represents. But that's what we have to do to, that's the document we use to try and promote our business. Next slide. So these are a couple of photographs of some of our product. Like I said, we only build single-story apartments. We build these with the thoughts for seniors that predominantly rent from us. Things like zero clearance thresholds for senior access, wheel-to-access, and easy in and out of the garage, easy access throughout the unit, and ADA access throughout the entire Next slide, please. This is a bullet point of the reasons people either move here or why they're driven to rent from us. Most folks pay a premium to live in an apartment style like this. These are basically townhome units with two-car attached garages. As the, as you finish construction and the irrigation systems are fired up, the park-like setting becomes evident, and we've included a little over 30% open space, I believe, in a concept plan. I'm not going to deny that our concept plan will closely resemble a preliminary and a final development plan. Next slide, please. A lot of people say that renters aren't the same as mortgage owners, and for the comparison, I like to jot down that everything a mortgager takes care of and pays for, so does the renter in the form of their rent payment. And it's important to note that we do have a financial application and a background check that we do on every home renter, and it's no different than if they were buying a moved-down home for $300,000. It's basically the same qualification standards. They just have the, they're paying for the flexibility in their lifestyle to live a relatively maintenance-free lifestyle and the ability to move on and transition their permanent homestead. I would add, through the years, as I go through some of our communities and visit some of the residents that I met when we first started down here in the Cincinnati-Daten market, there's folks, especially from Wright-Patt, that have moved into our communities in Washington Township and Sugar Creek Township, and have lived there since day one, and that's going on seven years in some of those communities. So we can be a permanent resident. Just because we're apartments doesn't mean people have to move in and out on a constant basis. So, next slide, please. Everyone's aware of the site. We probably don't have to look at this and study it very much. Next slide. So this is our concept plan, and like I said, this will closely resemble what our preliminary and final development plan will look like, and it incorporates the three major components that the comprehensive plan required. That's a commercial aspect, a residential aspect, and we're proposing a linear park with a multipurpose path that'll connect across the street to the school path on the south side of National Road. This is a pretty typical plan. The density is not that great for a multifamily use. It's a little over five units per acre. There's communities up and down National that are similar in size with third-acre, quarter-acre lots. But this is generally considered medium density in the land planning world, and this is pretty typical of the density that we propose. Next slide, please. So a couple more pictures with our exteriors. There's nice things about the architecture. I have an architectural background, and the methods we use are extremely good and create very low utility bills for our home renters. We build two-by-six exterior walls filled with bad insulation, lifetime dimensional shingles, Energy Star certified windows. Every unit has a high-efficiency HVAC system. There's some of the specs there that we're pretty proud of and proves that our renters approve of the construction that we offer. Next slide, please. The interiors are open concept plans. They're all the, they're all containing two bedrooms, two full beds, a den space, and a two-car garage. It's an open plan that's accessible for seniors, easy to navigate, wheelchair access is a thought that we have into our senior-oriented design. And every unit has an open concept kitchen with granite countertops, stainless appliances. There's granite in both bathrooms, on the countertops, LED lighting throughout the unit. Everything we do is trying to drive the utility usage of our units so that there's minimum utility bills for the folks that rent our units. Next slide. That's all I have to embellish the staff report. I think if you want to bring up the Q and A at this point, I'll take notes and respond at the end of that.
Council members, is there any questions or comments from Mr. Thurman?
Evening, Mr. Thurman. I actually, yesterday, went over to your development over in the Tip City area, just right outside of Hoover Heights. Didn't plan on it, but I guess it was kind of-- Didn't plan on it, but I guess it was kind of almost a good thing to see that, you know, a day after one of the biggest snowfalls that we've had here for a few years. I went into the leasing office, drove around, and they stated that when it comes like times for snow, that Redwood, what you guys do is you basically take care of the sidewalks, and then you have an outside company come in and do the streets and the driveways. And all that was done, you know, very well when I saw it. Is that consistent with your properties? And is there any other services like that that, you know, would typically, would sometimes be on the municipality that you guys handle?
That's a really good point. There are some benefits with the Redwood product. We are all private streets, and there's no burden on the public work system or department. And we do maintain them consistently across our portfolio with snow removal, grass cutting, landscape maintenance, gutter cleaning. We wash our units, completely power wash every building once a year. We take pride in our street and curb appeal, and we have a pretty strong maintenance program to keep our properties in shape. We also use concrete streets because they are the best long-term maintenance opportunity and not the cheapest flexible paving system available. So, we do things upfront that make sense in our long-term operation. And every community is self-sustaining, and we take care of our own property. And the proposed linear park, we are proposing to install it, keep it, and maintain it, and use it quite effectively as if it's public space. And we're even, well, we'll get into those details as we get into the development plan. But that's one of the components that we'll maintain and offer to maintain in perpetuity. Thank you, sir.
Good question. Is there any other questions or comments from Mr. Thurman and council?
I have a couple. So, a big part of, I think, why we have heard so much vocal opposition from this project is the tone you took on the first planning commission meeting, Mr. Thurman, with residents, when you basically referred to residents as opposition and understanding that if they don't get their way, they're not happy, et cetera. We have another developer that the city's working with who has taken time to meet with residents and have a workshop here at the government center, even with COVID going on, do a walking tour with residents, done a lot to help residents feel comfortable with the development. And the tone that you took during that original planning commission meeting, I think, is why the opposition of this development is so vocal. I have a question in regards to when you say you usually get these done and you persevere. What do you mean by you persevere? What does that mean, that Redwood perseveres?
Well, that is my opportunity to say we try to work with the community, the city engineer, and come up with solutions that are beyond what Redwood is proposing. An example of that might be the traffic light or the pedestrian crossing at National there that ties the multi-use paths together. Or we might regrade some property lines to help neighboring properties drain properly so that we're part of a fix. So, persevering is a word I use to express that we can, we can bring opportunity to the table that benefits past the Redwood boundaries. And I do apologize for that interpretation that you had that first meeting. I've been doing this a long time, and I still get the butterflies and everything else the first, the first time I step in front of a podium on any particular zoning case. But I'd be happy to meet with anybody between now and the next opportunity. I take many calls and many emails. I'm a pretty flexible guy and easy to approach. But I do apologize for that, for the way that came across. I sure don't intend to do that.
What did you mean by background checks for the units?
We run background checks for criminal backgrounds for our residents, and we run financial credit checks. So, it's very similar to applying for a mortgage.
So, what type of background checks would prevent someone from obtaining a lease with
I just read through that recently. Anything, any violent background, any drug-related background. Basically, we follow the fair housing guidelines to the T. So, anything that falls outside of fair housing, we generally say no thanks. And we treat every applicant the same way based on those fair housing laws.
Anything else from Mr. Thurman? Okay, thank you. If you could stay with us, we'd appreciate that. We may want to call on you a little bit later.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, now we're going to move to the proponents and opponents portion of this. There's just a couple of things I want to remind everyone. This is about the rezoning request. It is not about the minutia of the, you know, how we're going to, you know, cut the grass or, you know, how they're going to get the water there. That is just not an appropriate format for that. That comes later in the process. This is a step in the process to approve or not the rezoning request. So, if we could, if everyone could just keep their comments to that topic, I think, you know, we can, we can communicate really clearly. So, we're going to, I'm going to ask that anyone who speaks, please, if you would just state your name and address, and all this is for the record. And as part of our protocol, visitors are limited to five minutes. Now, that doesn't mean at five minutes I'm going to hang up the phone on you, but please respect everyone's time. Looks like there's a lot of people that are at least watching. I don't know how many are going to speak, but we want to give everyone who wants to speak their time at the mic. So, just please be, you know, be cognizant of that, please. So, first, I'm going to ask for proponents. And that would be anyone who is on the call that would support this rezoning. So, do we have anybody out there? If you do, just raise your hand on Zoom or unmute. Okay, one more time, I'm going to ask, is anyone out there as a proponent? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move to the opponents. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay, Mike Greer and Teresa, you're on.
I'll make it very short because I know we have a lengthy presentation that's going to be given by Dana York here very shortly. I just want to say that I entirely object to the statement that this will benefit our community. It will not. It may benefit very few people of our community, mainly stakeholders. But by far, it is a burden to anyone living near this development and anybody that travels through this area. It's going to be a burden. That's all I'm going to say, and I'll let somebody else go.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Okay, Dana, Mr. York, you're on. If you could state your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Dana York. It is 246 North Diamond Mill Road, Clayton, Ohio, in the old village of Clayton. Is a presentation allowed to be shown now or no?
We're not, we all have a copy of the presentation, so if you would just reference to that, that's going to be the format.
That's not right. Okay, I appreciate it. So, all of you, I believe, might have a copy of this. A group of about thirty of us have been working very hard on this, dedicated a lot of time and actually money to this, to put this together. So, appreciate you letting us communicate this to you. So, one thing I want to point out is everything that I will be presenting today, I'm trying to stay away from opinions, and most of this is fact. So, if you would look at the second page there, this is where we talk about the Clayton Improvement District. So, as Mr. Jack Coons referenced, this, it was outlined by him, and certain excerpts were read. If you look at the purpose, which I will read, it is the purpose of the Clayton Improvement District, number-one overlay district, hereafter referred to as CID I zero, or O, to allow the, for flexibility in zoning area which will result in the development of a compact neighborhood development with, with the following emphasis: connectivity with the Clayton Town Center, unified architectural themes that will allow for freedoms in design and building materials while clearly creating an integrated neighborhood. Neighborhoods, activity areas, and open space around a well-designed transportation network where pedestrian activity is strongly supported. The support of commercial use in the town center to ensure quality development, and an emphasis on people and neighborhoods where they live and play in design, and a design where open space, public and institutional uses, and recreation uses are interwoven into the fabric of the overall neighborhood context. So, clearly, as stated by the opposition, or the people who are applying for this Redwood, there is no, this is public property. Now, they clearly stated that in the zoning, in the previous meetings, that this is public property, and that if, say, we wanted to have a park there, that they would gladly let the city pay for the upkeep of the area. Also, if you go on to the Planning and Zoning Code sections, the provision for Special Area One, and then Section Five there under B, there is a section that says non-residential uses may only be permitted when such use conforms with the City of Clayton Land Use Plan or an amendment thereto. Also, this section also states that if a residential development is over twenty-five acres, which this planned development is twenty-seven something acres, it must be controlled. The public spaces within that must be controlled. If you flip over the page to the next page, the public spaces shall be protected and maintained by homeowners association. In the last meeting with the planning commission, it was clearly stated in the Redwood documents that they don't have a homeowners association, and that's actually a selling point. Whereas this presentation, they're clearly saying, well, there is kind of a homeowners association fee in that it's included in the rent. Well, there isn't a homeowners association fee. The Clayton Improvement District also is associated with the Village of North Clayton. The Village of North Clayton residential landowners have to pay a residential homeowners association fee, that the public land use is maintained by that HOA fee. This will not. So, it clearly goes against the, this section of, you know, the section that was read, one, You turn the page there to the next one, the impact fees. So, the impact fees, when they were first initiated, the impact fees started out at seven thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars per unit. There were two emergency amendments to that, which have reduced them now down to one thousand three hundred and thirty. So, instead of getting the, almost a quarter million dollars for the impact fees, which we would have got, there would now only be thirty-eight thousand dollars. Also, in regards to the traffic light, that's a one-point-two-million-dollar project as stated by Clayton when they went to go have a quote for this. The grant, which has been denied twice, would have covered eight hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars of which. Also, within the plan of Clayton, it calls out multiple times in the long-term plan, the need to develop Haber Road and widen it, put curbs, put sidewalks, which has obviously not been done yet. And the reason why they want to do that in the plan of Clayton is to encourage development, not to have development come and then change the road. You turn to the next page. Here's just a few excerpts that I actually got from your website, the City of Clayton's website, where Mr. Jack Coons calls out that if a traffic light is put in there, it will alleviate traffic congestion and accidents which have occurred over the years. And then also, the next excerpt down from 2013, it calls out that ODOT did not agree a light was warranted at that intersection. If we were to put up a light, it would be a liability issue for the city. There actually was a traffic study done at that intersection. Four thousand cars a day go on Haber, and twenty thousand cars a day go on National Road, and the speed limit is fifty miles an hour. So, trying to connect a walking path to another walking path on a fifty mile an hour road with no light there is going to be somewhat of a challenge. You turn to the next page. The environmental impact, the current flooding on Fox Road at the corner of National and Haber is a very large issue. If anyone has ever gone down National Road after a very large rain, there is massive flooding that goes through the tunnel underneath National and over towards the stadium. It fills up the entire drainage tunnel there. This picture is actually a picture given by one of the people who helped put this presentation together of her front yard on Fox Road when it rains. Fox Road, I'd like to point out as well, is a one-and-a-half-car lane with no shoulder and no lines. The only proposed exits of this development are on Fox Road and on Haber Road, and none on National Road. Next page, you can see the current flood areas. The house in question that the pictures are from is actually circled in orange. You can see that there. And then the circled areas is where flooding occurs, where standing water sits almost every time it rains. If you turn the next page, we'll go into the Redwood community. I think that's kind of been brought to light here by the other people speaking about their, you know, their Better Business Bureau rating. And then also, I'd like to point out the, the non, the non-availability of an HOA fee. There is no pride of ownership. They do not own, they rent. Then you go to the next few pages. So, the next few pages should point out the fact that, I'm sorry, I just lost track.
Hey Dana, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but if, just make sure you stick to the zoning, the questions on zoning. So, take your time.
Yeah, one second here, I apologize. So, the next page there talks about the Better Business Bureau rating. And then if you go to the page with the four communities, the four communities there are actually the ones that are located around the Dayton area. It's Redwood, Tip City, top left, Redwood Apartments, Fairborn, top right, Sugar Creek, bottom left, and the Centerville ones, bottom right. If you notice, all of them, they are right adjacent to either other developments or commercial buildings. None of them are standalone as this proposed one would be. None of them are adjacent to schools. None of them, you have to drive through a school zone to get to or from. If you turn out of Haber Road and turn right or left on National, you go through a school zone. If you go to the next page there, Redwood Apartments in Ohio, these are just an overview of all, of a few of the ones in Ohio. Next page, if you go to the characteristics of Redwood. So, without just reading through all of these... So without just reading through all of these, there, there are no curbs. What they call sidewalks are actually paved or concrete edges to the driveways that have a seam. There are no curbs keeping a car from hopping up onto that sidewalk. It is just a concrete slab with a drain every few yards, or every few hundred yards or so. The picture on the bottom right is actually the development in Lebanon. This is what it looks like. Does not promote walking on it very well. You can see the person there walking down the street. They're, they're in the road. Well, it's not really a road, it's a private, you know, it's a private property. Here's a few in Indiana, Iowa and Michigan. You can see their vicinity to other developments or businesses. Now on to the plan Clayton, as the Section 1171 calls out, the only thing that, that can you can use this land for other than residential use would be if it fell in line with the plan of Clayton. Well, the plan of Clayton, which a lot of you were a part of here at the very top, calls for walkable neighborhoods, reduce sprawl, central core, connected parks, great streets and infrastructure. And then the picture at the bottom is actually the land that's directly north of this, this parcel that's in question. And the comment on that picture is actually many of Clayton's residents consider agricultural land to be great value to the character of the community. The next page there, where it has a map that's taken from the comprehensive plan, calls out the proposed core for the central, or for the plan of Clayton, is this area. So we are saying that we want to have the core of this area, if zoned this way, to be potentially an apartment complex. Next page, proposed parks plan. This will be private property. We cannot put a park in the middle of it. It clearly calls out in the plan, this is to be a park. And there also is to be a bikeway connector going up along Haber, which is in the long-term plan, which is in plan Clayton. Some of the possibilities that some of our residents sent me to put in the presentation is a potential farmer's market at the front and then parcels, parceled out down Haber Road. And then also, let's, let's go with what the plan actually calls for, a new city center. Let's put a plan together and be proactive and put something together that the city is proud of. Let's move the farmer's market from in front of Esther Price, which is going to be developed, obviously, by the new development company that we are partnering with. Let's move it there. Let's create a city center, like what the plan calls for. And like I stated, like I stated, let's make a plan. Let's try to be proactive and find a suitable and highly rated developer to partner with to help us build what was envisioned originally for the city. Are we going to say that we're proud to have a 27-acre apartment complex where we were supposed to have our city center? And then one other thing I'd like to mention, if we say no to this, we will not be the first. Liberty Township, Auburn Township, Brunswick Hill Township, all within the last two years have said no. So we will not be the first, and we will most likely, most definitely, not be the last.
Okay, thank you, Mr. York. Yeah, I appreciate that. It's obvious, you know, you and your group did a lot of work on it, and we appreciate you coming, stepping up and speaking for them on that. Just, I'm gonna, I need to put us in reverse just for a minute, and there was an administrative duty that I neglected to do before we started. And that is, if, when you speak at a public forum like this and it's for a city government, you have to be sworn in. So if I could ask Mr. Greer and Mr. York and anyone else that would like to speak tonight, if you could just take, you know, hold up your right hand and swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth and the whole truth. It's pretty simple stuff, but, you know, we just want to make sure everyone's, comes in the right frame of mind. So again, we appreciate everyone coming in, so. Who's, who's up next?
Hi, my name is Christina Crawford, and our address, 4725 National Road. I just have a couple of things. I'm gonna address the original statement in Mr. Coontz, when he was referring to the petition and the HUD information. Yes, he was correct. The original petition did state that. However, after the first meeting we went to and received the correct information, I did go back and update that to make it as accurate as possible. So that information is no longer in the petition for that exact reason. Secondly, he stated that this plan Clayton is supposed to be for an improvement. Well, opinion-wise, this isn't an improvement. Putting apartments in that location isn't an improvement. Like Dana stated, there are many other options that we could do. I understand this is a zoning meeting, however, obviously, if the zoning passes, then we assume that's the next step is to pass this. So I feel like all of us community members should have a say in this. You, somebody cut the chat off so we couldn't even talk amongst each other, which I don't feel is right either. And currently, the petition has 1,087 signatures for a no vote on this, this, you know, this rezoning. So, you know, if you're trying to do what's best for the community, then you need to listen to the people that are living in the community currently, not the people that you intend on bringing in. Because we're the ones who are currently paying our taxes and, you know, we're the ones that feel that we don't, that we don't want this here. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Christina. Mr. McGee, you're up next. And if I could just remind everyone going forward, this, let's try to stay on topic of the rezoning. Again, you know, opinions and everything, of course, we're interested in that, but we, we really, this step is concerning the rezoning only, so I appreciate that. So go ahead, sir.
I'm Bob McGee, 9696 Fox Road. And I understand that, and maybe I'm not very active in the government aspect of things, but when, when we have Jack Coontz defending Redwood, I certainly feel that that is on the table tonight. You know, I want to address a couple of things that was brought up, you know, the Better Business Bureau, I'm a business owner, and to be honest, if you write a check to the BBB, you will be, you'll be A-plus rated also. I'm disappointed that Dana York was not allowed to present slideshow, but Greg Thurman, the developer, was. And for the record, he went for 11 minutes. My wife, Maria, would like to also continue on.
I have a few other things that I'd like to bring up, which Bob said so succinctly. Obviously, I am vigorously opposed to this rezoning. And I, like Bob said, and we've been reminded numerous times, Redwood is apparently off the table, but Redwood has everything to do with this rezoning issue, and we all know that. The city has met with Redwood over a year ago, I believe it was. The plan by Redwood is comprehensive, so it's pretty much a done deal if this gets rezoned. We're not dummies. We are aware of this. Anyway, regardless, I live on 9696 Fox Road, as Bob said. We have lived on Fox Road for 30 years, and we can attest to the numerous issues that we have with flooding during heavy rains. We've obviously lived there, we see it. It's turned our area into the Poseidon Adventure. So we do realize that construction there, especially of 147-plus units crammed together with the additional roof areas and concrete, it's only gonna reduce the natural watershed and the drainage, making our flood zone even worse than it already is. We have no guarantee in this plan from Redwood that what they're proposing to do will negatively, won't be negatively impacted on our area. I'm also concerned about the existing water table and the contamination of our wells. It's well-known that during construction, that can cause water tables to shift. That in turn causes flooding, or more flooding in our case. All the properties on Fox Road have a well. I'm not aware of all the properties on Haber Road or all the other roads, so my neighbors may have to help me out with that that don't live on Fox. However, on Fox, we do. And I'm worried that construction can cause contamination of our wells. Apparently, that happened in the City of Inglewood, and it was pretty bad. The city basically had to take care of the owner, I believe, for life for that. Again, what's the guarantee that this construction is not gonna negatively impact our properties? Again, as we've said over and over, the rezoning is inconsistent with the city's current zoning and its future land use plan. The addition of apartments would be completely incompatible with the area that we're living in now. It's basically, it'd be like sticking out like a sore thumb. You've got all of these long, well-established homes on large lots, and you want to plunk down right in the middle of it, 147 tightly crammed together apartment complexes. And regardless of what Mr. Thurman says in his slide, that he